Welcome to the August 12th, 2021 Parma City School District Board of Education meeting. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Roll call, Mr. Dusio.
Mrs. Roth.
Present.
Mrs. Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Kreis.
Present.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Steven.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Smilek, can you please confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
It is.
Can you please monitor livestream throughout the meeting? And if there's a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty may be addressed?
We will.
Thank you. Any information to the board this evening?
Yeah, actually, we're going to start with retirement recognition. We weren't aware that this gentleman was going to come, so it's not actually part of the agenda. But we definitely wanted to take a few minutes to recognize his career and all of his contributions to our school district. So Dr. Schneider is going to present a few words.
I'm humbled to have the opportunity to share a few words on Mr. Kement. As we recognize and thank him for his years of dedication, we wish him a wonderful retirement. Mr. Kement's personal and family connections to Parma City Schools is inspiring and is a wonderful example of the social fabric of the district and our community. Mr. Kement graduated from Parma Senior High School in 1982. He completed his student teaching in winter of 1987 at Arlington Elementary and graduated from Cleveland State in 1988. His first teaching assignment started in 1988 at Arlington Elementary in fifth grade, where he taught for five years while earning a master's degree in curriculum instruction. From there, Mr. Kement moved on to second grade classroom at Pleasant Valley Elementary for three years. He moved to Thorough Park, teaching grades three, four, and five, over the course of 16 years. Mr. Kement transferred to Shiloh Middle School, where he taught sixth grade science and social studies for nine years. He served as the social studies department head, was a great girls volleyball coach, undetracked. Mr. Kement's father, Roger, was deceased. Graduated from Parma Shat in 1949. His mother, Jean Kement of Parma, graduated from St. John's Baptist in 1953. His siblings, Joe, Teresa, Jeff, and Tom, graduated from Parma Senior High in 1975, 1977, 1979, and 1987, respectively. Mr. Kement married Kathy in 1981, graduated with a holy name. They have three daughters, Faith, who graduated from Normandy in 2014; Emily Anne, 2016 graduate of Normandy; and Claire, who graduated from Valley Forge in 2012. All of the children were involved in music and marching band. During his tenure, Mr. Kement worked with 10 principals, eight superintendents, and over 2,000 students. Mr. Kement, I can only imagine the pride you must feel in looking back at your career and knowing the impact that you've had. Congratulations.
Do you want to come up and say a few words?
Sure. You really shouldn't give me that opportunity. Oh, thank you.
We can settle in.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say thank you to Parma City Schools, especially my first co-teacher, Mario Vento, was my cooperating teacher when I did my student teaching. And that gentleman guided me all throughout my years of teaching. And now we can finally, as he said, we can sit down, we can have a beer together. He said, "Thank God I retired before I die." 14 years ago, 14 or 15 years ago. But Parma City School District is a fantastic district. I've worked with so many fantastic teachers who have dedicated their lives to this profession and these children. And I've worked with some wonderful people. Like one of my most recent work wives is here, Mrs. Morris. I also have, it's interesting, one of my former students is here, Derek, Derek, Tasha, President of the elementary. Coworker Chris, someone who's taught my children, Mr. Ballon. It's a tight-knit community in the district. And I'm just grateful I was able to be a part of it for 33 years. Would it have liked to have been your laundry, but COVID is not. But it's cracked up to be, or not, but it's nothing enjoyable. And online teaching just changed and said, "Ken, it's time to go." Let some of the younger ones come in and take over. So I just want to say thank you. I forgot to say thanks to Dr. Carl Schneider and his staff. He has a lot of wonderful throughout my career, so thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you, and again, thank you for coming. It really makes it much more special when we have our retirees with us, so we really appreciate. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I forgot to mention my wife. She is the biggest reason that I survived 33 years of teaching. And her, the best words and advice she gave me every day. You could tell, "Don't do anything stupid."
Oh, yeah. I always used to say that, especially when there was a period of time where every time you turned on the news, some teacher was in trouble for something. And, you know, you don't know whether they did do something or they didn't, you know? It was just, you know, "He said he's the kind of thing," or "He said he said," or whatever. And that was like in the 90s, and that used to scare me. So I would always tell them, "He's stupid." Keep the classroom door open all the time.
That's where the ghost part, I listen. But anyway, this is my wife Kathy, my daughter Faith, daughter Emily Anne, and my daughter Claire. All products of Parma City Schools, their long live Parma, Parma Heights, 7-year-old grad. Again, thank you, sorry.
Oh, you're welcome. Moving into just a few comments, too, we released our health and safety protocols this week. Now, this is a difficult time as we try to balance, you know, a return to normal with a surging Delta variant. And certainly, you know, the numbers of COVID cases in our state and our area are higher than we, quite frankly, anticipated and certainly higher than we wanted. However, we also want to try to be as safe as possible and return to as close to normal operating procedures as possible. And I think that that's sort of the threading of the needle that we tried to create with these protocols. It's really important to note, too, that we followed the Ohio Department of Health and we followed the Kiowa County Board of Health almost word for word. And so, you know, one of the most contentious issues has been, you know, are we going to mask or not? We followed their language very, very closely in that they strongly recommend it, we strongly recommend. I know I will, when students return, I will wear a mask. Not wearing a mask tonight because, quite frankly, all of us have at least had the opportunity to be vaccinated. We chose not to do that, that's our own personal decision, but we had that opportunity. When students are back in buildings, I will be wearing a mask. And I expect and encourage many of our staff members and, quite frankly, our kids, we strongly recommend that they wear masks as well. Just a few things on masking, too. We have gotten several emails since our email yesterday, actually not as many as I anticipated, protesting that we didn't mandate masks. And my rationale to those parents has been that we received many emails last year from parents that were concerned about masks because their children were exhausted and having some type of health effect from those masks when they came home. So we try to take that into consideration as well, when we strongly recommend, so that families ultimately have that decision. Families, what weigh, you know, the ability to wear a mask versus, you know, what happened and maybe what their children endured last year as they sent to school. Now, on buses, and this has been an interesting question as well, we really have no jurisdiction here, which is interesting. It's an interesting split of how, you know, laws work. The governing authority for transportation is the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And the reason would be that often, transportation crosses state lines. And when transportation crosses state lines, it becomes federal purview, not state. And they have clarified, and we received correspondence from some parents saying, "No, you know, public transportation does not include school buses." And typically, that's true. And they are correct in interpreting the Ohio Revis Code that way. However, in this instance, the CDC has clarified that yes, indeed, their order did include school buses. And so, we really don't have an option on buses. Our bus drivers will be ready to supply masks if they need to. We've also received questions about our ventilation. And folks have asked, "Well, you know, you could have used Essar funds." And Essar funds is, you know, sort of the stimulus that the government has provided through the American Rescue Act or American Rescue Plan. You could have used those to increase your ventilation. Our ventilation actually meets state and Kiowa County guidelines in terms of being safe and providing safe environments. The Unibetts that we run provide ventilation that is safe. To work with some of our buildings and try to improve that would have been a very high cost and not one that we felt was necessarily in our best interest at this point due to the fact that we plan to replace these buildings. And these would not be easy projects. So again, our ventilation meets local and state requirements, and we will continue to emphasize that as we go. The other piece of that I would really point out, folks have said, you know, "You made this a political issue, and you carved, you caved to one side or the other." And I want to be clear and say that that's not at all true. We, that we surveyed parents, quite frankly, you know, have no way right now to know really what percentage wants masks versus what percentage doesn't want masks. So what we did was, you know, look at all of the guidance, follow the guidance as closely as possible. We also enlisted the help of our Health and Safety Committee. The Health and Safety Committee in our school districts compose of teachers, administrators, support staff, you know, folks that are really on the ground on a daily basis. So this wasn't any type of political pressure. This wasn't a type of, you know, we don't know what the majority wants. If you judge from my emails, quite frankly, it's about half, half and half. There's an even split. If you judge on other school districts, the ESC put out a survey that talked about, ESC is the Educational Service Center, and they provide services to school districts throughout Northeast Ohio. And part of that is gathering information and sharing that information. As of right before this meeting, there were 23 school districts that responded to the ESC's survey. Nine of them are requiring masks, and 14 of them are recommending. So even school districts are very split. There isn't, "This answer is going to pacify 80%. This answer is going to pacify 20%." That's not how this works. We've again tried to follow local and state guidance as closely as possible in our wording. Now, one sort of asterisk on the quarantine guidelines. The quarantine guidelines are being updated literally on a daily basis. So while we put our quarantine guidelines out yesterday, school actually doesn't start for about another 11 days. And we anticipate, quite frankly, that we may have to adjust those. We don't like doing that either. We don't like the back and forth. We don't like the sense of, or lack of clarity. But we will follow the guidelines that are revised on an updated and a frequent basis. So while we put those out, and quite frankly, I like the guidelines. There's actually incentive to wear masks in the guidelines. If you are masked and you're exposed, the likelihood that you're going to have to quarantine is far less than if you're not masked and you're exposed. Certainly, if you're vaccinated, you almost, there's no way that you will have to quarantine unless you actually come down positive, as a positive case. The other piece that I would share is we are continuing to provide access to vaccines as much as possible. We will have vaccination, our kickoff will be a vaccination site, and that's next Saturday between 10:00 and 12:00. We partnered with, I believe, Rite Aid. Rite Aid will be providing vaccinations, not only for COVID, but also for the flu. So we want to continue to make that as accessible as possible. Right before this meeting, we got an email from the governor. It was not personalized. It was a blast all superintendent saying, "Would you consider being a site for vaccinations?" And we will absolutely consider being a site for vaccinations. We know that in hospitals right now, 98% of COVID patients in hospitals were not vaccinated, 2% were. So there's very good data to show that vaccinations are effective and help reduce the risk and reduce the spread. We will not mandate vaccinations. We had a question today, "Will you allow children without parent consent to get vaccinations?" Absolutely not. This is, that's still, you know, a parent has that wherewithal to make those decisions for their children. So wanted to provide that context to what we released. It is difficult. We all wish that we weren't here right now. We all wish that, you know, that what we had seen in the spring had carried through into the summer. But we are. We are battling a Delta variant, and we will be strategic and diligent, just as we were last year, trying to keep all of our students safe. Any questions on any of those?
Thank you, Dr. Smilek. That's very thorough, and what are you going to do?
The only other piece then we have, not the only other piece, because this is a big piece. We, as we talked about in the spring and end of the summer, provided summer school at really no cost to our students and encouraged a much wider participation in summer school. We encourage that because we know that students missed a great deal of instruction. As hard as we worked to provide very high-quality virtual instruction, and I think we did that. There's still a gap that starts to build when you don't have those in-person learning experiences. And so, we were very aggressive in having a much more comprehensive, much more inclusive summer school this year. We're very proud of the results, and we're proud to show them to you tonight. So we'll introduce Tiffany Strzok, who did a phenomenal job designing this. But she's got a couple of friends she's going to introduce, too, that did a phenomenal job implementing it.
All right, so as Mr. Keating and Mrs. or Ms. Copley are coming up here, I just wanted to share the excitement that, in terms of our data that we're going to share tonight. So we had two programs. We had one at Parma Senior High. Parma Senior High was our 9 through 12 Encompass Credit Recovery. We had 300 students that we served. 179 credits were recovered. We have about 100 credits that students can still recover that are in process. So overall, we're looking at 279 credits. We had five Valley Forge High School graduates over this summer, one Normandy High School graduate, and two Parma Senior High. We had 14 certified staff members and two classified staff members at the secondary level that worked seven weeks straight to work with our students to make sure that, you know, our credits were recovered. In addition, 9 through 12, we identified students that were credit deficient in our core subjects and our world language, so we offered those courses. I am just so impressed with this. As we move forward with our secondary level, we plan to look at our enrichment side. So in the past, we've always had that credit recovery piece, which is great. But we also want to provide our students with additional support to get credits ahead of time or to take courses that they otherwise could not take because their schedules are full. So that's something that we will look for as we continue to plan for next school year. Before we talk about our Shiloh program, which was very new this year, we had close to 450 students K through 8. And we transported 335 students K through 8. We served 6,183 breakfasts K through 12 and 7,659 lunches. So in addition to having our certified and our classified staff working at the high school level, we had food services led by Bob Gorman, where all of our children got lunches and breakfasts. And then we had transportation K through 8, in which our students that were in a two-mile radius or more received transportation. So I want to turn it over to Mr. Keating and Ms. Copley to highlight what occurred at Shiloh, because these two, although I have the vision, they did all the day that they worked. And I'm excited to listen to what occurred.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, board members. Thanks for having us, Dr. Smilek and Chris Strzok. I'm Chris Keating. I'm the dean of students at Thorough Park Elementary School.
I'm Allison Copley. I am a second grade STEM teacher in Plotonville, Indiana.
We've got 15 more minutes. Resolution with her name, I think.
And we have Mrs. Marion Armstrong here as well. She was our lead educator at Shiloh and is a guidance counselor at Parma High. So she was a great deal of help to us for this program. So as Mrs. Strzok said, we had our K to 8 program at Shiloh Middle School. Everybody was able to get a grab-and-go breakfast, and lunch was provided for every student. We certainly gave lunch to almost 400 students. And within an hour's time every day, I sometimes think about how we did that, but it got done. Each student received two T-shirts as a uniform to wear throughout the program. So it's at Parma City School Sale, S.A.L.E., Summer Academy, Learning, and Retreat. We provided language arts and math curriculum for all students that attended. And we had 13 different enrichment courses that were available and tailored for grade levels, primary, intermediate, and middle school.
We had about 45 certified and classified staff members. It was truly a team effort this summer. We couldn't be more thankful from Bob and Anne in the cafeteria to Ray and St. Carol as the custodials to you, as well as our, you know, certified teachers and our aides and our assistants. We were very grateful for all the support we had. We had about 300 elementary students K to 4. We also had 148 middle school students. In elementary, about 85% attended three to five weeks, and 76% attended three to five weeks in middle school. We did have a lot of parents reach out upfront, letting us know that they had vacations planned, but they were very passionate about still being able to send their kids. So we did try to honor them, being able to take those vacations, but still take part in summer school.
So I talked a little bit about the curriculum that was the students received. In the math portion, we used a last curriculum called Belllet's Cell. The lessons were focused around grade level priority standards for the grade the student just completed. So if a student just completed sixth grade, they did math and language arts work in, with sixth grade standards to prepare for the seventh grade year. So in the math curriculum, there was teaching and modeling, guided practice, and independent practice with use of the manipulatives for the students to have in their classrooms. Each student received a consumable workbook where they worked in it throughout the day with their teacher, and then were able to bring that home. And there were some authentic literacy skills that were incorporated into the math curriculum with the Dynamath and the math magazine that the students had access to and worked in on a weekly basis. Students also used a program called Success Maker, an online adaptive practice program for 20 to 25 minutes, three to four times a week. And that was, they took a pre-test at the beginning of summer school, and the questions that they received each day were geared towards their level of engagement at that moment for math and language drugs. To see if our, the students that attended, if this helped them for the next school year, we're using our aims web and map scores from the spring of 2021 as our pre-assessment or our pre-test. And then we're going to, our students will take the fall assessment in September. We're going to use it as a post-assessment score, so we're going to hopefully see some raises in those scores for our students that attended our summer program. We used a similar program for language arts. There's a daily reading comprehension and writing component that was involved, and the students received a consumable writing journal. There was a ton of level reading books. Every time I walked into the language arts classroom, they were doing some sort of a reading circle with a grade level text and also differentiated text for the students at the little level. So they had book clubs on a weekly basis in summer school with groups of students in their classrooms. So I was very impressed with the core curriculum that the teachers were using for the summer school program.
We also had a lot of different enrichment options, and our teachers actually wrote their own courses for these, and they differentiated based on the grade levels that they had. So you can just take a look at a couple of the pictures. We had a couple of different social emotional learning courses. You'll see our kindergartners doing a little bit of yoga on the left-hand side, which they love. We had a water class. We had a couple of different STEM courses. Our middle schoolers actually built arcade games, and then the younger students got to come in and play them at the end of summer school, which was awesome to see. We also had a social studies course where they looked at different types of maps and how they could make landforms. So you'll see one of our students had created her own landform out of clay. And then a couple, just more pictures of enrichment options. We had several art classes. Some of our students were making candles. They did anything but a brush, so all different types of painting, all done without a brush. A big hit was the Safari Literacy Course that our little ones got to take. We saw a lot of animals in the building this summer. Thankfully, none of them were real.
Except those ants.
Yes, except ants. But anyway, our staff was very creative in carrying out different levels of learning for all of our students, who are very grateful for their creativity.
So we also partnered with a lot of local agencies that came and helped us out for the summer program, so we wanted to recognize them tonight. Our finale that Ms. Copley set up, you want to talk about this?
I made a networking connection with Luke Toth, who is a Parma High grad. He is the leader of the Cavaliers Youth Sports Program. He's been trying to get here into the district for a long time, and so I said, "Well, guess what? Today is your day." And so, he brought his whole team. He brought Sir CC. And almost every child left with some type of CADs or Remo Bli on the last day. But they did two separate assemblies for us, elementary and middle. Every child got to participate in some type of a contest or something along those lines, where they got to get up and be active. So we were very grateful to be able to make that connection because he was very excited, but so were we, and they did a great job with our kids.
We also partnered with Junior Achievement. They couldn't send any employees to come and teach the class, but one of, a few of our enrichment teachers volunteered to use a week out of their enrichment program to teach the Junior Achievement lessons to our students. Almost every student grades K to 8 was able to experience Junior Achievement. There were some students that were not, but almost every student was able to achieve it. So we have some photos of our younger learners on the left experiencing in Ms. Dudis's class. And then in the middle are some of our eighth grade middle school learners experiencing with Mr. Steckel. So we also partnered with Recovery Resources, which is a local agency that provides services for mental health. They have their own curriculum for grades K to 1, 2 to 4, 5 to 6, and 7 to 8. And that is, Jason Steckel is one of the employees of them, and he came every single day. For five weeks he was there, teaching our, mostly our middle schoolers, some life skills and how to manage life as we know it through COVID and social media, and just what it's like to be in middle school. So I bowed down to him every single day at the end of the day. He did a phenomenal job with working, you could see him working with some of our middle schoolers in our circles right there. And he, the way that he set up his classroom was very interesting to me. He kind of like put the desks around in circles so that nobody was like in the middle or not facing each other. So they all had options to see each other when they were speaking and sharing their experiences.
Big, big fan favorite, Spiced Field Kitchen. Steve Baker came. Every single one of our kids was able to access a farm-to-table lesson from him and got to try some fresh berries and cream, more importantly. You know, Mr. Baker is wonderful. He is great with our kids over at Pleasant Valley, so we knew he would be a hit at summer school as well. And so, it was really great for all of our students to get to access a lesson with him.
We were also very fortunate to have many, many donors to our program, with either donated monetary funds or prizes for our Positive Behavior Intervention Support Program. Those are just some of the donors that were donated. So we have almost 15 local businesses that donated to our summer academy program.
We did several different PBIS incentives for our students. We had sailor bucks that they could earn throughout the weeks. At the end of every week, we did drawings for them with prizes. And we also did what was called Sailor Shout-outs. We set up a Google Jamboard, and the teachers throughout the week could go out and shout out students for their performance. And then, at the end of the week, in our newsletter, we would post the link to the Jamboard so parents could go and see those shout-outs to their children. We also wanted to make sure that we were, you know, really shouting our staff out because after a year like we just had to come and to give five weeks of time more of teaching, we know, you know, is huge. So we did Nacho Average Staff Member, and we also did a teacher appreciation card just to kind of keep things exciting for the staff as well.
And as you can see, Mrs. Armstrong was one of our Nacho Average Staff Members. So we appreciate her being here tonight to support us. This is what we talked about earlier. Each student received a T-shirt. You could see that they were color-coordinated by grade level. So not only was it cool for the kids to come in, but we kind of knew like, "Oh, there's an orange shirt running around. He needs to go back to the third grade classroom." Or, "There's that pink shirt again. That kindergartner is on the loose, so we need to make sure she gets back to her room." So the kids loved it. They loved coming in, wearing them. And I think it built connections across all of the school buildings as well, because we had students in the classes from all eight elementary schools and all three middle schools at the summer academy.
We did a parent feedback survey. We just wanted to get some feedback moving forward if we're able to, you know, do summer school again next year. We had 65 parents participate over two weeks. 97% thought five weeks was an appropriate amount of time for summer school to be run. 100% parents thought that the length of school day was appropriate. So it was about six hours for a whole day, three and a half for a half-day. 100% of the parents, or I'm sorry, 86% liked that their children brought home... 86% liked that their children brought home breakfast each day.
100% of the parents that were surveyed said they would definitely or maybe send their children next year to Summer Academy. So we thought that was a very good statistic to share with you. 99% felt that the communication from the administration was clear and consistent. So had ourselves on the back for that. And 43% of the elementary parents would like an enrichment-only option next year. We did hear from some parents of students that maybe didn't need the intervention for math and reading. They could just come for an enrichment portion. So moving forward, that's something that Allison and I have talked about for including extra as a possibility.
But just to clarify with that 43%, we made it a required question, so there was a not-applicable choice. And that was kinda the biggest portion, was the parents who had a middle school child. So they didn't actually answer the question. So it was about 70-some percent of the parents were elementary. So that was a pretty good portion of them.
And these are just some of the feedback that the parents left in the short-answer portion. I thought this was a great experience for my kids in second and sixth grade. They were there in the morning block and always came home happy and had fun while learning. My older child loved the teacher and has really made an impact on their summer. So I'm not gonna read all those.
This was kind of the general consensus of what we got. A lot of parents had said, you know, my son or daughter, my son and daughter, or, you know, my children were not so excited at the beginning to go to summer school, but they ended up loving it. So they were very grateful for the experience.
And then, you know, we had our grand finale on August 6. Those are just some pictures of some of the things that the students were able to participate in. As Allison said, we had a middle school and elementary assembly with the Cabs Youth Association for an hour. And then on the other hour, they participated in some Minute Twenty Games in the cafeteria. They had some airbrushed tattoos that, we had some tattoo artists come in and do some airbrushing. We had a ton of prizes that we had from the donors that we raffled off. So the students had a very, very, very exciting and fun night's day.
And thank you to Audrey for creating our high sale through summer for our photo booth. So it's one thing to have a vision, but both of you have worked so hard since February just planning all of this. So very impressive work. And I also want to recognize Marion Armstrong. If you could just wave your hand. Marion is one of our school counselors at Parma Senior High. We were close to opening, and I picked up the phone. I said, Marion, I really need another person to help us. And so without your help, I don't think we would have been successful. So thank you for everybody, and we're so happy about the impact we've made on our students' case as well.
Congratulations.
It's absolutely fabulous that you guys pulled that off. That's, I'm just so proud right now.
So I had the opportunity to walk through a couple of times if one of your attended. And it definitely was like, and those kids were happy and chilling. And Mr. Keating's write a T-shirt, and they knew exactly where that kid was headed back to. So it was a, it was a good thing. And Gwen came home with a giant Cabs flag. And she was, there was a picture of her in one of those. She wanted Nelly's bar with her sailbox, and she's posing like this with her Nelly's bar. And they sent out a weekly, I think I heard, the newsletter that came home and had all the stuff, reminders about next week and the Friday theme and everything. So it was just very, very well executed. So your vision was very well executed by them.
And kudos really to the entire team. I actually have a family member that went through summer program this year, and everything comes up awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, and the one piece, so thank you Tiffany. Thank you Amy. I know you've done a lot of work. Allison, Chris, Marion, thank you so much. I also wanted to just remind our population and our team here that this was all paid for by Esther Funds. We often lament cuts in state funding. Federal government was very generous, and this is part of the fruit of that generosity. And we will, we have the funding to continue to offer these programs. So thank you to our federal government for being able to fund such great opportunities for our kids.
Well said.
That concludes the superintendent's portion of the meeting, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Smiler. Communications this evening, Mrs. Carpus. Board members?
I do not have anything right now.
Treasure?
Yes, I do have something. So to a time runner first. We did a five-year forecast, which was approved in May. And at that time, we're saying about $154, $155 million in revenue, pretty close for expenditures. And about June 25 is when we passed our budget for this year. Well, we're still waiting on the state to pass their budget. They finally did on June 30. And at that time, they passed a new funding formula. So with the new funding formula, instead of the money coming through us and then flows through to either charter schools or community schools, it's going directly to the charter schools or community schools. And so our revenue is going down. Well, I'll give you the example. In 2000, fiscal year 2021, we get about $36.8 million in revenue. But we had $18 million in expenditures. So that roughly comes to, let me see, it's $18.7 million. Now that it's flowing through, not coming to us at all, we're only getting $19 million, but our expenditures are $687,000. So it's the same amount. It's still 18.7.
Same difference.
It's a wash. It's, we didn't lose money. So when you see the five-year forecast and see revenues go down, expenditures move on down about the same amount. We didn't lose money. It's just a new funding formula. Just for another example, I looked up Berea to see how they're doing. Because it's not just top, every school district. Berea received $11.2 million this year, in 2021, and they spent, expenditure for $3.4 million, which was roughly $7.8 million. This year, they're getting $7.9 million and expenditures $284,000. So it's a wash for them too. I just wanted to point this out before the five-year forecast comes out and people see the huge drop. What happened? You lost money? No, we have moved money. It's a new funding formula.
Thank you, glad you brought that up. Go ahead.
Just a clarification. When you talk about the expenditures being so much lower, do you mean the monies that go to charters and community?
Correct.
The other monies are expenditures here in our, I mean, we're using that as part of?
So for an example, I can still help this out.
Budget income.
We, I think it was, we were twelve. I just looked up Berea, but I looked up Parma here. I don't know what, I don't know about, but. Last year, we lost about $12.8 million to charter schools and another $4.4 million to scholarships, either Peterson or Ed Choice. So those are now flowing directly to the schools and not to us.
It needs to be like the middleman.
Right.
And they cut out the middleman.
Exactly. But cutting out the middleman changed our numbers. We're not gonna spend that $17 million that we're not getting anymore, but we're just letting you know the numbers are going down because of that. Dr. Stock, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just also want to point out that while this is being sort of hailed as this victory for public schools, financially, it was a wash. And then quite frankly, what we're concerned about is when they eliminated us being a pass-through and sort of a fiscal agent of these funds, they also eliminated the bureaucracy that actually kept track of whether or not students really were eligible for Ed Choice scholarships. So for instance, we had two schools that qualified, Parma and Valley Forge. Well, if a kid came in and said, well, I want to take an Ed Choice scholarship, we were the bureaucracy that would check to make sure that those, that student was actually signed to a Parma and a Valley Forge or a Valley Forge district, not a Norman District, for instance. That bureaucracy is gone now. And quite frankly, the ability for families to sort of take advantage of the lack of investigation is pretty right, really. And so we're concerned that it won't actually be a net wash. It'll be a net negative because at least in the past, we were the ones who verified where that student lived, what school that they should attend. Now, that's incumbent upon private schools, who by the way, now stand to gain more students. At the same time, the cap was lifted. There used to be a cap of 60,000 on a number of students who could actually have these scholarships. There is no more cap. So this was actually billed as, while the legislature's saying it's a significant win, folks who really have dug into, you know, the sort of the erosion of support for public schools are saying this was clearly, really an assault. And this was tantamount to, you know, lining up the army tanks on the border. We haven't started complete war yet, but the next budget, you know, continues that erosion. And really, we anticipate even more aggression toward privatization of public funds, essentially.
That's the third legislative update I need to.
I couldn't help myself.
All right.
I kinda like to come on the other end. Very well stated again. And I was aware of that, that we were losing oversight, I guess is the right word. And we're supposed to have total faith that everybody is going to be totally honest. And maybe once in a while, we have an inkling through doubt that absolutely everybody goes that way. But here's hope.
Is there an appeals process or anything?
None of this is established yet. And that's, and again, this isn't all ODE's fault, right? I mean, you've got a June 30 budget date, and then everybody has to see what passes and then scrambles to set up the bureaucracy. So there's nothing right now. There's really no check, you know, honestly.
And Mrs. Carpus, it doesn't come along until September 30. In Ohio, it's 90 days after it goes past.
Right.
For, from law, so state really doesn't know. They're just kinda scrambling to, with ODE. We don't know what's going on.
Are those lists for our students that would get an Ed Choice that are in our home district, is that still, like, do we still have access to that list?
Yeah, I mean, a family would just have to Google, you know, Ed Choice Ohio.
But I mean, do we have a list of that so we could fact-check as if there is an appeals process to appeal?
If there is an appeals process, rest assured, we'll be aggressive with our following.
That's where I was heading.
Yeah, but at this point.
There's nothing in place.
And that particular piece of legislation is for the next two years?
Yeah, two-year budget.
So stay tuned.
They could change everything in two years.
So yes, stay tuned.
All right. Thank you. Any other communications from other board members this evening? All right, seeing none. Do we have any amendments this evening?
Nope, no amendments.
And at this point, we open the meeting to the public to address the board on tonight's agenda. Do we have any requests to be heard from? None this evening? Okay. Then I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08357, approval of the written record of proceedings from the July 15, 2021 Regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-08357. Questions or comments on the board? Mr. Musio.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-08357 has been approved. We now move to curriculum. Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08-358, granting authority to the administration to rescind approval and amend action on Resolution 2021-07-332.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for 2021-08358. Any questions or comments?
We, is that, I don't recall what this was.
It's just a change in the arrangement of the family. All right. We always have these different agreements. We have a doubt with students with disabilities and their families.
Any other questions? Mr. Musio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08358 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08-359, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with North Royal City Schools during the 2021, 2022 school year.
Second.
Motion and second for 2021-08359. Questions or comments on this resolution?
Just want to point out that this is North Royal paying us to provide services, not the other way.
Thank you. Any others? Mr. Musio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-08359 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08-360, approval of college credit plus partnership and memorandum of understanding between Kyler Community College and the Parma City School District.
Second.
Motion and second for 2021-08360. Questions or comments? Mr. Musio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mrs. Bratz.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08360 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything else to discuss, this will be.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vaughn. We move to Mr. Christ with business.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt Resolution 2021-08-361, authorization to continue to provide transportation for first-step students.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for 2021-08361. Questions or comments? Mr. Musio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08361 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08-362, approving alternate transportation companies for field trips and athletic events when district transportation is not available.
Second.
I have a motion a second for 2021-08362. Questions or comments?
I just had a comment, really, I thank Mrs. Brodts for asking this question. This almost never actually happens. It had happened more frequently when we were partnering with Brooklyn. Obviously, that was a little bit more of an extensive stretch of our transportation fleet. Now, importantly, we billed Brooklyn for that, so we weren't losing money, but we would get caught shorthanded more when we were providing their transportation as well. Our transportation director from last year estimates that we had actually a Parma conflict where we couldn't get one of our Parma teams to, you know, competition four to five times a year. So this is very rare.
And I know we do this every year. It's a safety net, just in case some.
Yep.
And usually does not happen. Rarely does it happen. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08362 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08-363, approval of determined safety zones.
Second.
Motion a second for 2021-08363. Questions or comments?
I do. Last year, we had several parents that reached out, I think it might have been a cluster of students that walked to school together down hillside. And there was some concern about no sidewalk, no lighting, that kind of thing. And I know there were some conversations possibly with, maybe with the city about putting in a sidewalk there to make that a safer area. Did that happen? Because I didn't see it on this.
No, it hasn't. This is sort of a baseline list.
Okay.
And we can look again at that.
Okay, thank you.
And Mrs. Carpus, any other questions or comments for the board? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08363 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08-364, authorizing purchase of lease 2100 full color press and amending maintenance agreement.
Second.
I have a motion a second for 2021-08364. Questions or comments?
It's like, you know, we're purchasing it for a dollar.
Okay.
So it's not like we're purchasing it for $10,000. It's a dollar. It's an existing piece of equipment, and we're purchasing it for a dollar, and the maintenance agreement is not very large. It's, it's, it's like.
It's a more than a dollar worth of time.
It's like $32,000 in savings for the year.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Please, thank the many.
That's good.
I'm a copy machine.
That last line is awesome. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08364 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Christ. And we move to finance. And Mr. Christ.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-08-365, approval of the July 2021 financial report.
Second.
Motion a second for 2021-08365. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08365 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08-366, ratification of investments.
Second.
Motion a second for 2021-08366. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08366 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08-367, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
Motion a second for 2021-08367. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08367 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08-368, authorizing Ohio History Connection and State of Ohio Compliance Regarding Records Retention and Disposal.
Second. Motion a second for 2021-08368. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08368 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08-369, approval for the Parma City School District of Education to enter into a contract with Assured Partners for reporting IRS Code 6055 and 6056 ACA compliant.
Second. I have a motion a second for 2021-08369.
How to explain what this is, anybody who has insurance, if you're here or anybody with us, at the end of the year, you get something, it's 1095 for showing you have insurance for what month of the year. And you have to report it in your tax returns that, yes, I had insurance for calendar year 21. We hire a company to complete, compile those forms for us, report it to the IRS, and mail it to all the employees, anybody who has insurance with us. So that's what this is. It's $4,500 contract, essentially what this is.
And that's a common practice.
Yeah, school districts hire these firms, because that's, they're experts in that. They can do this. We're not supposed to do that.
All right. I would demand that the cost is more than $4,500.
Oh, way more.
Labor, just to, let's both do that, yeah.
Other questions? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08369 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08-370, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
It's all the summer school stuff.
Yeah. I have a motion a second for 2021-08370. Questions or comments?
My comment is usually, it's, you know, obviously very much, thank you, thank you, thank you on the bottom of our hearts for donating to such a worthy event or program that we had. And it's fabulous that that many people came out and donated to the program. That's good. I'm sure it helped you quite a bit. Excuse me. Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you. And we're, we're happy, kind of ecstatic when there's a few people up there, let alone a whole long list. So I agree. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I think often that takes a lot of outreach on the part of our staff.
Oh, absolutely.
To make that happen. They're the ones that reached out to these, many of these companies, you know, individuals are different things sometimes, but when it's these companies, our staff has made that connection, so thank you to them as well.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08370 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Christ. We now move to legislation with Mrs. Carpus. We might have hit it already, as you said.
I was gonna say, I think Dr. Smilak quite covered that right now, so until there is something of substantial talking points, we'll pass on legislation this evening. All right.
Thank you. Mrs. Brodts, Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-08 through 71, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of certificated appointments, confirmation of certificated replacements, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental contracts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, confirmation of substitute teacher appointments, approval of certificated non-compensated leaves of absence, acceptance of certificated resignation.
Second.
I have a motion a second for 2021-08371. Questions or comments? Got a mouthful. Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08371 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-08372, confirmation of certificated administrative appointment.
Second replacement.
Second.
A motion a second for 2021-08372. Questions or comments?
I was gonna wait until.
Okay. I was gonna say something. Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Oh, yeah.
Probably did that by a little. Mr. Schweitzer.
No, no, I mean, we've been reading about it for.
No.
Yes, 2021-08372 has been approved.
So now, we have a couple introductions. First, Allison, if you want to kind of stand. The problem with Allison, actually, that we're worried about is replacing her in the classroom, because in all honesty, she is one of the most impressive teachers that we have in the Parma City Schools. And she has really been steadfast in her work with students and her desire to advance her career, which we really admire. You saw, you know, the passion and the organization and the wherewithal that she presented tonight in terms of what she did with summer school. But she's done that throughout her career. She's really been a leader of our STEM program. And so while we're very excited that she's starting her administrative career, we're gonna miss her in the classroom. She's a tough loss. But I know she'll bring all of those qualities and skills that you saw tonight to her new position at Pleasant Valley. So if we can give Allison a round of applause. Did you want to say anything, Allison? I know it sounds a little.
I'm just very grateful for the opportunity, and I appreciate everyone who has supported me getting to this opportunity. And I am very, very excited to continue my work at Pleasant Valley with this all.
I almost brought Glenn to lobby against her moving, because Glenn still didn't have her this year, so now we're gonna have an issue. We have had the privilege of having Coach Cook as a teacher, so I can attest to that wonderful qualities.
And we also have Chrissy Kruchchev, who is going to advance her career as well. She was dean of students last year at John Muir, and really distinguished herself, especially in the work that she did with the PBIS program. She was the leader of really taking some groundwork that had been delayed previously by Dr. Schneider, Mrs. Porter, but she took it to that next level with her team and secured a gold medal. And I think that that is really a great example of the talent that she brings to this position. I want to be clear, too, this is not an ad. The administrative specialists of initiative implementation is something we've had. Mrs. Zarema was our first. We, when Mr. Cook decided he wanted to go over to Greenbrier, we decided to sort of reconfigure his responsibilities and add this position. Again, it's not really an ad, it's a replacement of the work that Mr. Cook had been doing, which we've just sort of divvied up amongst other administrators. But really, Chrissy's passion and just the way she was able to mobilize that team at John Muir and really take it to just a different level that no one had seen in the whole district, actually. John Muir was the first and only to accomplish a gold medal in PBIS, and so I know she's gonna bring that same initiative to her new position. I think you're gonna miss kids a little bit. It is a different step into the central office, and I know how much you enjoy that element of the job, but we're thrilled to add you to Mrs. Strabko and our team. So congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Want to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you all. I'm excited. This is year 20 for me in Parma. Parma is my heart. I would like to be nowhere else but here. I'm excited to delve more into curriculum and teaching and learning and take my restorative background and meld it with teaching and learning. So thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited to be moving to the public, learning from Amy and Chippy and enjoying our time. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, congratulations. Let's finish this off, and now we'll move on. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-08373, acceptance of certified retirement.
Second.
Motion a second for 2021-08373. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, Resolution 2021-08373 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-08374, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignment, approval of classified stipend, confirmation of classified resignation, approval of classified non-compensated leaves of absence.
Second.
I have a motion a second for 2021-08374. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08374 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-08375, acceptance of classified retirement.
Second.
I have a motion a second for 2021-08375. Questions or comments?
Do we have any of these people here?
No.
I see the effect of the, there's a couple. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08375 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-08376, approval of change in salary schedule for substitute employees.
Second.
A motion a second for 2021-08376. Questions, comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08376 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-08377, confirmation of classified appointments.
Second.
Motion a second for 2021-08377. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08377 has been approved.
Just want to point out, that's our farm-to-school initiative, and we've reclassified a position in that department, and we're very excited for Emily's background. She will really be able to help Mr. Gorman continue to really diversify our offerings. I know Mr. Gorman's really been sort of a star of what we've been able to offer in terms of, you know, initiative and creativity, and I know Emily will help as well.
Any questions or comments? No, we'll go to the next one.
We're done, yeah, okay.
Used to the comments before, never mind.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-08378, approval of revision of job description for supervisor of buildings and grounds. for supervisor of buildings and grounds.
Second.
Motion and second for 2021-08378. Questions or comments on this one? Now, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08378 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-08379, creation of special education assistant with registered behavior technician certification position and adoption of job description.
Second.
Motion and second for 2021-08379. Questions or comments?
Good, just for clarification purposes, for right now, actually, this is centered in our ACES program, and this really allows us to have some stability in that, as well as some additional certification, that RBT pieces really helps our folks to be able to work with students who qualify for our ACES program. It does have the potential to expand, although currently it'll be centered in ACES, and this is, again, just a piece of how we've tried to diversify and be really a one-stop shop, and once we have these programs, we want to make sure that we have highest qualified people in those positions, and this job description allows us to do that.
Sir? Other questions, comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08379 has been approved.
Unless another board member has any comments or questions this evening, that will conclude Human Resources.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Brodts. Moves us to policies with Mrs. Carpus.
Yes, we have two up for adoption tonight. We went over them at the last board meeting, so I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08380, approval of revised policies, policy 2260, nondiscrimination and access to equal educational opportunity, policy 5517, anti-harassment, and policy 8510, wellness.
Second.
I have a motion and second for 2021-08380. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08380 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-08381, approval of new policies, policy 2370.01, blended learning.
Second.
Motion and second for 2021-08381. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-08381 has been approved.
Unless the other board members have anything else for policy, that concludes policy tonight.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Carpus. Is there anything this evening, any other information that any board member would like to request? Seeing none. I just see opportunity to have questions or concerns read into the record. Are there any new questions or concerns to be read? I see one. Is it? As I read these into the record, I want it noted that I read them verbatim. We have 72 hours to respond, and actually, up to a next board meeting if necessary. Based on what I see this question is, I think we've pretty much answered it, but once I read it, Dr. Smilak, if you recap maybe some of the things, and then we will have it right into the record this evening. This is from Susan Rocco, 2718, the CERN, Parma, Ohio, and the question is, who makes the decision about wearing the masks, and who is involved in making that decision?
So, the mask policy largely came down to the Health and Safety Committee. The Health and Safety Committee is, again, comprised of leaders from across the district. We have a president of the Bus Drivers Union, our presidents of the Educational Assistance Union, we have teacher leaders, the president of our Teachers Association. Mr. Hoon is the director of Exceptional Children, sits on that committee. Dr. Schneider is the executive director for Human Resources and Business Operations, sits on that committee. I lead that committee. Probably the best insight comes, actually, from Mrs. Mueller, who is our lead district nurse. Her contacts with university hospitals and with Kyler County are really immeasurable, so she has a lot of input, because she really can get a hold of those folks on a minute-to-minute basis. She has their numbers in her phone, even. So, that is largely who that comes down to. And then we also make sure that the board is comfortable before we release anything or formalize anything. It's not something that has to be voted on, so we just make sure that, you know, they're a sounding board and that they are comfortable as well. So, certainly, if the board, like any matter, if they were not comfortable, then we would have greater decision, or greater discussion, I should say, to make sure that we can get to a consensus. But, again, largely, this comes from the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay, just to follow up a little bit, you know, what has come down from Columbus, as well, as far as recommending wearing masks, strongly recommending, but not mandating?
Correct.
Falls in line with what the Safety Committee has gone through and looked at, as well as the state of Ohio, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. At this point, then, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-08383 to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for 2021-08383. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Christ.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-08383 has been approved. This meeting is adjourned.